Recording? And everyone can hear us okay? So for the record, this is the regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. Today is Monday, December 21st, 2020. In the City Hall auditorium is Councilwoman Wagner, Councilman Rabino, and participating via Zoom, I have Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Waldron, Councilman Oliver, and his Councilman Kevin Arrowan yet? Okay, all right. So we have our quorum before we begin the meeting. Could we please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held December 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any? Any abstentions? Motion curious. Item two, this is, it doesn't require a motion. This is a presentation by Economic Development Director, Rista Malanka, who is participating via Zoom regarding Blue House Group and the Building Healthy Communities Grant. I believe that Rista did send out an email earlier today with her written report, but at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Rista, and you could go through that report.
Hi, good afternoon. I did email out the economic development report, and I am happy to answer any questions on any of the items or go through anything that you might have. But what I wanted to just focus a little bit on was our Building Healthier Communities Grant. I know there's been some council members who have been asking, and rightfully so, because it's a very exciting grant and opportunities for the city of Torrington. And it really does relate to our COVID recovery and supporting all of our businesses. So that's where I want to focus, kind of my little bit of discussion. But please, if you have any questions and anything else, I'm happy to discuss those with you, too. When we applied for our Building Healthier Communities Grant, we, there was a lot of things they wanted to do. We put a lot of tasks, and there are a lot of different areas of focus. But through the whole grant application, we really focused on economic gardening. And what was economic gardening? And what did it look like for the city of Torrington? We modeled a lot of it over what Littleton, Colorado, did. But really, we wanted to say, what do we need to support our businesses in Torrington? And the idea that we focused on was, you know, yes, we need to attract new business. Yes, we need, we want to be business friendly and bring in new business. But we also want to take the businesses that are here, that are already invested, that have been here for five or 10 years, and help them grow and help them be sustainable. And how do we do that? And throughout all of the tasks that we were putting into this grant, that's really what we focused on. And how do we make it, how do we, you know, make it business friendly but economic gardening? Taking our existing businesses and taking five businesses and getting them to grow two employees each versus going out and bringing in a new business in that will be 10 businesses. 10 businesses. We do need to do that, but our focus was really economic gardening. And when we looked at this, we also looked at what types of businesses. And it's all of our businesses. It's our big businesses, our small businesses, our manufacturing, retail, restaurants. We've heard a lot about restaurants with COVID, but, you know, also with our offices, doctors' offices, insurance, real estate agents. Really, it's all of our businesses. And they all have a little bit different needs and different things that they want. But we looked at, what can we do to support all of them? And support them so that they survive, support them so they can grow, support them so they can bring in new employees, and, you know, build the community around these strategies. Then, you know, we applied for this, and then COVID came into the picture. And, you know, when we applied for this grant, we never, we didn't, we weren't even thinking of COVID. But I think in the pandemic, it really just highlighted the importance of supporting the businesses that are already here, that are already invested in our community, and making sure that they're sustainable. Making sure that, you know, if a pandemic comes or we have a natural disaster or we go into a recession or any things that can happen that impact businesses, how can we make sure our businesses have what they need to be sustainable and pivot on what they need? So the first few months of the pandemic, we were really just focused on making sure the businesses had their immediate needs, had their access to PPP, you know, knew what loans and grants are out there, knew what the rules were. And as everybody kind of got their feet under them a little bit with that, we did send out a business survey, and we got over 40 responses, almost 50 responses from different businesses, as well as, you know, just email communications that I've had with, and calls that I had with our businesses. And what we, one of the questions we asked is, what do you need other than financial resources? What other things can help you that you need right now? And what we were hearing from our businesses was right in line with our economic gardening strategy, right in line with what we were applying for Building Healthier Communities to do, the things that we were already doing. So we were just able to then focus and put more resources behind those things that the businesses were telling us they needed. And you'll see in our, in my report, some of the things that we've been working on under the Building Healthier Communities Grant. You know, one of the things that people need, we need to be business friendly, City Hall. We need to have access to our directors and our department heads. People need to be able to access us without coming into City Hall. And that was, you know, really prevalent with COVID. But we see that without COVID, too. A lot of, you know, developers, surveyors, professionals that need to talk to us about development in Torrington don't always live in Torrington, so they need that access. So we've been working on getting a permitting software product. And I'm not going to get into too much detail because you will, we will be giving you a formal presentation on that probably next month. But that's one thing we've been working on. Communication and marketing and promoting our businesses and our events and what's going on is another thing we heard loud and clear from our businesses. So we hired a social media intern that created a Facebook page. It's the City of Torrington Community and Economic Development. And we have been starting to share things from different businesses, community events, resources for businesses. D E C D just had a grant that was out there for small businesses. We wanted to make sure we got that information out. Right now, we're really just trying to build our following on that page. If you see it, you share it, you like it, please do so. That's one way that we're going to communicate with them or with the community and our businesses. Our social media intern and I have been working on a newsletter. We're going to start with a bi-monthly newsletter and then hopefully grow it so it becomes a monthly newsletter that we get out to businesses again. Interactive, meant to be online, links, information about, you know, resources for businesses, what businesses are doing, what community events are out there. And then we've also taken over the It's Happening Here website. I think some of you may recall the city had this website developed. We didn't really have the resources to manage it the way that it was intended to be managed. And Civic Lift had taken it over and was doing some things to it. I really think that can be a great tool for us, and I wanted to take back management of that website so that we can control the content that's on there, so we can develop the content that's on there, so it can link to our Facebook page or our message is consistent with our newsletter, with our Facebook, with our website, with our City Hall website. So those are all things that we are working on. Developing that content, growing the following, and making those our way to communicate with the businesses, promote what our businesses are doing, and also make sure that they're getting the resources that they need beyond our constant contact list and the email list that I have in contact with them. One of the other big things that we did is we retained Blue House Group. And I know that you've all received a letter from Heather regarding that. And I did just want to take a couple of minutes and address the letter and update you on what Tim has been doing with the city. This is not a contract where we are paying Blue House Group and Tim to go do events for us. That he's not going to be out there just promoting events and operating events. He is looking at our downtown, all of our downtown. How can we reimagine some of our vacant spaces? Our, we've talked about this, our vacant storefronts. How can we work with business owners where their building has traditionally been retail? We know there's not a likely chance that, you know, retail is going to be what it has historically been, especially with all the online shopping. Brick and mortar is not what it can be. How can we work with that business to reimagine what that storefront looks like? And not just the storefront, but maybe the alley next to it. How can we, you know, create infrastructure that attracts businesses, that attracts people, that gets people to want to be there? You know, creative placemaking is what we did with Franklin Street and the Plaza. That is an extreme example of how amazing creative placemaking can be and, you know, what we can do. I'm not suggesting we're going to go do that type of project throughout the city, but there are tactical urbanism, but lower cost ways to do, create places that businesses want to be and people want to be. It's not about really just looking at Franklin Street and having events on Franklin Street, but looking at all of downtown, working with all of the businesses, the property owners, as to what they can do with their properties. How can we get those spaces filled? You know, a lot of them are pop-up type spaces because people are concerned to take a risk. So if their risk is only four to six months, maybe they're more willing to do that than if it was a year or two or three years to investment. So that's what we're working with Tim on, to come up with a plan as to what that looks like. You know, Heather is doing events down on Franklin Street, and we absolutely need that. That is a big piece of the puzzle. But that's not the whole puzzle. That's not the whole thing. It's not just all about events. It's about those places and how can we create them? That's to reimagine what downtown looks like, not just Main Street, but Water Street, Church Street, Mason, the whole area. How can we reimagine what that looks like? How can we coordinate our efforts so that they are more attractive for people to come down and visit more than one place? So that's really what Tim's focus has been, that we've been working on doing that. He has, you know, already started the work. You know, it takes a little bit to go through our whole procurement process, but he's been working really since we got the contract signed, even though he didn't have his retainer quite yet. But we are moving forward. He's met with six or seven different business owners. He's been downtown several times. He's had communications with many other business owners and is setting up meetings and appointments to do that. Our plan is to have a report to you by your second meeting in January. If it's not the full report, it will be an updated report or like a progress report showing you what we've been doing, what results we found, and where we are with that. So that's really all I have for a specific update I wanted to give you. But if there's any questions regarding anything that I was just talking about or anything else in the report, I'm, you know, happy to discuss with you more.
Is it possible to read Heather's letter into the minute? We have a copy of it, but I think it would be good for those listening to have an idea of what Heather wrote in her letter.
I unfortunately don't have a copy here with me. Maybe I can.
So anybody online that wishes to see the letter, if they want to contact Jonathan, Jonathan can forward the email to the public. I just want to expand a little bit on what Rista is talking about because Heather's email is in regard to the city contracting with Blue House Group, which is not a marketing agency. It's not, it's more than an event planner, which is, I think, essentially what Heather is under the impression. So what can I tell you about Blue House Group and what we were aiming for when we met with Tim Moore to talk about this? So for over 100 years, the core downtown area has been a commercial hub. It's primarily retail, hospitality, entertainment, residential, and manufacturing. While many of those uses have faded away, leaving blighted and underutilized spaces, leaving a ghost town appearance on our Main Street. For too long, so many of the downtown buildings have been hindered in the potential reuse because the property owners either have an unrealistic expectation of the value of their property or they have no concept as to how the space can be marketed to expand the possibilities for reuse. Too many of the downtown property owners are tethered to the historical use of their properties. It was a storefront, it's always been a storefront, and they continue to market it as a storefront. What they're not taking into consideration is that there is a change. I have to take my mask off so I can breathe. So what they haven't been taking into consideration is that behaviors change. Shopping changes. People's expectations about entertainment, about purchasing, about recreation have all changed. And good cities change with those behavioral change. They adapt, they modify. And what we're finding is because we have property owners that have been sitting on these pieces of properties forever, trying to market them the way that they've always been used or just letting them sit because they're waiting for a higher payout. What we were trying to do is trying to bring in somebody who can look at all of these spaces, look at these buildings, and help the property owners understand what's different. How do you market your space differently? How do you use your space differently? You have a 10,000 square foot building, which might be attractive to somebody who wants to buy a 10,000 square foot building. But if you also have a really cool alleyway that is attached and part of that property, you're going to attract an entirely different purchaser who can say, now, wait a minute, that I can work with. If there's a building with a little pocket park next to it, you know, you market it such that you're marketing everything, all of these amenities, all of the assets that make these buildings unique. A building that may have a unique rooftop situation where it can then become part of an infrastructure that gives you rooftop dining, that gives you rooftop gardening opportunities. So we were trying to find somebody that can help us work with these property owners, the businesses, the residents of the city, businesses, not just those businesses on Main Street, but businesses on the upper end where much of the commercial space seems to have gravitated up at the top of East Main Street, people on Winston Road. We want to look at everything in the city of Torrington. Part of that analysis has to include transportation, and it has to include what are the connections to the neighborhoods around the core downtown area. We're looking to develop a collective impact. It's not just fill that storefront. It is, how does social houses, reuse of their space, impact the potential for the Howard's Building? How would the reuse of the storefront or restaurant front where the Warner Theater is impact a building or two that are already on the market on Main Street? How do we work with those property owners that actually have their properties on the market so that they're actually looking for an expanded potential use? Expanding the market that may be out there? You know, our Realtors are good, but, you know, they're accustomed to selling Torrington the way that it's been sold for the last 40 years. We need to try to develop a spec sheet that tells a different story, that includes the micro metropolitan area, that includes, you know, where the changes in demographic are. As an aging community, we want to make sure that we're trying to look at ways to attract a younger population. So these are all of the things that we talked about when we were developing the Building Healthiest Community Grant application. And then when we were seeking somebody who fits that bill. And Tim Moore, who grew up in, I think it was the Thomiston area, who I believe is in his late twenties, came and met with us. You know, we were aware of some of the stuff that he had been doing in Hartford, what he had been trying to get moving along in Meriden. I met him in West Hartford, where so much of the old traditional office spaces have become co-working spaces. So we wanted to, we wanted to talk a little bit about how he could bring some of those ideas and help Torrington reimagine what it is that we're trying to accomplish in attracting a younger demographic, in retaining our young people, and in filling up these great historic legacy spaces, if you will, on Main Street, Water Street, Mason, Maiden, Prospect Street. You know, you could go up East Main Street. We're looking at reuses. We also recognize that as a designated opportunity zone that there may be developers out there that are looking at Torrington differently, that can take advantage of all of the incentives that would go with an opportunity zone. After meeting with Tim, after talking about what it is we are trying to accomplish, we quickly recognized his ability to be able to do this for us. He's already visited a number of the property owners. He's visited a number of businesses. Our intention is, over the next four to six weeks, introducing him to the Mayor's Committee on Youth, bringing him into the Chamber of Commerce's Young Professionals Organization, and again, connecting him to, even including this older population. You know, introducing him, if we can ever get the senior center reopened, into, you know, into that population as well. Because Torrington is always going to have, you know, a pretty good mix of, you know, senior citizens and this next generation that we're trying to retain. We recognize that some of the early work, I think that in Heather's email, what she was concerned about is that the way the discussion went early and the way it was written up in the newspapers is that he was going to be planning events or he was popping up a table tennis club. The fact of the matter is, there may be some early work that is designed to test the theory of what the community's interests may be. Those, you know, those tests may be pop-ups. They may be, you know, they may be events to see who is it that comes down to this? Are we, are we getting, you know, the kids, the 18 to 24 demographic? Are we hitting the, you know, the 30-somethings? Or are we, you know, still very heavily leaning to senior citizens? So there is going to have to be a little bit of market testing that goes along with his analysis. However, it's not the purpose or the focus of this relationship with Blue House. The focus is to help the city of Torrington, the property owners, the businesses, and ultimately the users to do a full analysis, a collective impact of reusing these spaces, remarketing these spaces. I'm not talking about branding and imaging. I'm talking about activation. I'm excited. I think that he's the right match for us in this particular instance. I think there's been a grave misunderstanding of what it is that we're bringing this combination developer marketer to the table to do. It's unfortunate, you know, that so much information is gleaned from a newspaper article or, you know, even in our conversations, there's a lack of clear understanding of what it is we're trying to accomplish. But I do believe that if everybody would trust in the process, that in a very short time, there will be a progress report, a report, and some deliverables that everyone can put their, hang their hat on and say, this is $8,000, that was well spent. And before we make that next level of investment, there'll be a level of confidence that we're heading in the right direction. So with that said, the floor is open to questions.
Okay, back to that. And I appreciate that because I agree with almost everything that you've said. But I've been involved, as you know, with Torrington Downtown Partners for 10 years, and Heather, and Leo Donalds, and Cheryl Rossi, and Charlotte, and a group of people. Started meeting, and it was not just events. We knew that sometimes events could help bring attention to downtown. So we did some, we did some holiday specials. We did a scavenger hunt, we did things of that nature. But we were also working to work with one another to come up with ideas and suggestions for how to move forward. We had a person come to town who met with businesses. I think there were 45 people in attendance who were talking, she talked to us about how to present the existing storefronts, how to improve the appearance of them. To Steve Temkin, with that, we have repurposed a number of our businesses from retail to other uses. Brinks and Social House are examples. By Point Gallery started as a three-month temporary gallery, and we all know how that's expanded. But I think what Heather is talking about and what I was thinking was how do we incorporate those ideas that are already existing in the minds of many of our businesses and stakeholders along with what he is bringing to the table? Because there's a lot of duplication, I think, when we get to that point. And I think to Heather's point, when she said, talking to somebody local and looking at stakeholders, I don't know who the stakeholders are. I don't, I don't know of anybody who's been part of that event. And that's a difficult situation to try to figure out. I think that Tim has all great ideas and purposes, but I just don't think that if we don't meet with those existing businesses, many of them owned by dynamic, you know, phenomenal people, Ginger Val, Cheddar Rems, Cafe 38. You know, everybody in the emerging artists or group, those are all, many of them are millennials with great ideas. I think we need to be including our local contacts when we're developing this plan instead of somebody coming in and saying, oh, you have a great alley. Because perhaps the alley has another purpose is being planned for that alley. We don't know that. So that's what's hard for us to, for me to understand. I think that Rista did a phenomenal job on this presentation. I appreciate all that she's done and the breakdown on all of the grants. But being also on the Regional Economic Development Committee, I would love to see us include in our outreach to include Discover Litchfield Hills. We don't have to change from It's Happening Here, but to develop our city link to be part of that larger group, we would have our restaurants listed, we would have our businesses listed, we would have events listed in a broader form as well as locally. And I just, I just think that we just, we're not taking advantage of all the things that we have out there. We have, It's Happening Here is great. I was part of that in the beginning, working with Evan. But one of the things that Evan has been doing with the Civic Lift is doing stories. And stories are just background articles or videos on local businesses. And there's a great one on Nutmeg Fudge that's on Discover Litchfield Hills right now. And that's on there because I gave her name to Betsy Painter at Discover Litchfield Hills. I think if we were a state that had county government, Torrington would be the county seat. And I think we are the receiving town for more than just court cases. I think that a lot of people come to town for the Warner Theater, for other events, for other special things that are taking place for our restaurants. And I think that we need to develop that connection in a regional manner as well as local.
So Sharon, I just, I agree with you. And I just, you know, as you know, I'm on the Northwest EDC with you, and I'm on the executive committee. So I think that everything that the Northwest EDC and Jocelyn is doing is phenomenal. And I am in very much constant contact with Jocelyn. We talk three or four times a week about, you know, their regional efforts and how they, how we can bring them to Torrington, what our Torrington businesses need. You know, Jocelyn and I were in quite detailed conversations in the application process with what do our businesses need that they can provide at the regional level? So I do have a very close relationship with her, and we do talk a lot. You know, Discover Litchfield Hills, one of the great things about Discover Litchfield Hills and It's Happening Here, which is why I wanted to bring it back to us, is Discover Litchfield Hills, as you know, through the Northwest EDC, has had some money and some development money. And they're doing a different directory to promote our businesses. They have a new map that they're working on. And all of those improvements that they make on Discover Litchfield Hills are automatically part of our It's Happening Here. The people, places, and stories that are relevant to Torrington, when they're updated on Discover Litchfield Hills, they will automatically be put on our It's Happening Here. So that is great. What I think, what we want to do is we want to separate ourselves a little bit, and that's what we can do. We can develop their other pages. And that's what we can do, we can develop their other pages on "It's Happening Here" that promotes our own restaurants, that we create our own stories, that we highlight the things about our community that we want highlighted. And, and how do we do that? Because, you know, we are different from the rest of the towns. Every, every town has their own little story. And with the "It's Happening Here" page, we get the, the benefit of being that regional people, places, stories, connection. But then we can create our own identity through the rest of the page. So I agree with you. I think that the region has been doing some amazing work through the CARES Act funding that they had. And we are working very closely with them to make sure that all of our businesses have access to those resources and that the resources that they're developing are, you know, focused for cities like Torrington and Winstead. Because that's where are the hub of the businesses and the need is. So, so I do agree, regional efforts are very helpful to our businesses right now.
Thank you, Rista. And I really appreciate you explaining that because I don't think many people realize what's going on, you know, regionally as well as locally. And for us to promote that as well is, is important because I think it will encourage our businesses just to hear the information, you know, how they can get their message out.
Yep. And you know, I've been doing a lot of email correspondence, been talking to a lot of businesses. And now with our Facebook page, that's just another leg of communication. So, you know, any, any way that if you, you know, share our pages or help to reach out, that's great. But we are doing a lot of communicating and pushing that information out and in constant contact with our businesses. And one of the things that I just, you know, when we talk about communicating, one of the big challenges is getting the appropriate contact information in a place that we can reach our businesses. And when COVID hit, the state was offering PPE, the masks and the thermometers, to businesses for free. And they had to sign up. And part of signing up, they had to put their phone number and their email address so that we can contact them to distribute the information. We had almost 500 different businesses sign up for the PPE. So in addition to all the contacts that we already have and we already know, we already talk with, we got, you know, probably 300 of those were businesses that we got updated emails, updated phone numbers and contact information. So my email list now is, is quite expansive. And we use Constant Contact to send things out and emails for the different types of businesses. So I have one section I talk sent to just restaurants and one to hair salons and retail. So we've been working on that and, you know, you know, telling them about Betsy. I think you brought that up. You know, Betsy has been a great resource. She's working for the, the region. And she's also working for SBDC and helping businesses with their social media, with their marketing, how to access federal loans, how to get forgiveness on their PPP, how to change their marketing, not their marketing, their business model, how can they pivot to be more sustainable through this? So, you know, we've been, been doing a lot of that as well. I didn't put so much of that onto my report because it's, it is regional and I kind of focused on the, the city-specific efforts. But there's been a big, a lot of work going on with the region as well.
I appreciate that. And, and again, when you're looking at stakeholders and then also down in, it was the COVID recovery, the Steering Committee for Survive and Thrive. I just, I want to make sure that we have the, you know, the, the right stakeholders on those businesses. For example, Steve Temkin, we have over 30 commercial and professional tenants in our buildings. And I've tried to keep them in touch. I have emails for all of them. And I've tried to keep them aware of what's going on on the city level. But I just think that on a broader base, we need to, you know, maybe we can partner together on that to, to help promote them and add them to your list if they're not on there already.
Absolutely. If you want to share your contact list, I'll make sure they're all on there.
Absolutely.
So Councilwoman Rowett, did you have your hand raised?
I did. I know, I was reading the, you know, the comments in the chat. You know, just the comment, I think we all were appreciative of the letter that Heather wrote and the passion that both Heather and Charlotte have had. And, you know, particularly Charlotte's been around a long time and it's seen opportunities come and go. So as a council, we did vote collectively to support this group, you know, through the grant. And I think, you know, there, the collaboration and the respect for each other is so important as we move forward. It's almost like we just need to try another way and try it again sometimes. But I do think we need to move on. Certainly, I think all of us as members of the council know Charlotte and certainly Heather with all of what work she's put in. And so, but this is something the council did approve as unanimous, anonymous, not anonymous, but a unanimous vote. So I would like to, I think the report was good and the discussion was good. But I think it's probably time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cavanero.
Mute, mute.
Okay. Tim, the council certainly did indeed approve the $8,000 for the initial, the initial finding. When do you expect to have that to us?
So, is Rista, yeah, I see Tim Moore is on the phone on this call as well.
I'm still here.
I see him, yeah.
Yep. You know, Tim and I were planning on presenting something to you, the second meeting in January.
Okay. Couple of things. The, the purpose, I, I think, I think I understand what it is you want Tim and Blue, Blue House, Blue House to bring to this in terms of new ideas, et cetera. But I have to say, I mean, reading Heather's letter, I don't know the woman, but I was struck by a couple of things, just a couple of her suggestions seemed to me really on point. And I'm just wondering, how many ideas are being incorporated from the people that you're actually meeting with? It always seems to me, and this gets back to a conversation we had at the last meeting in, in another context, executive session, to be honest, so I can't talk about it. But it seems to me that ultimately, the private sector drives growth, okay? And, and I have a knee-jerk reaction to top-down government trying to create excitement and innovation and, and social, social, social forms of behavior because it's, it usually, in my opinion, in my experience, ends up being rather clumsy and off-target. The sharpest, most creative people usually are in the private sector. It's their money, it's their risk. And they have the kinds of constitution until actually mentally, emotionally to, to do those kinds of things and to create and expand. In Heather's letter, for instance, the idea of creating, I'm not sure how she planned to do it or where she planned to do it, but just the idea of having some sort of outdoor film festival, you know, regular film viewing thing is to me, you know, incredibly sharp and intelligent idea. And I know for a fact, I know for a fact that out west, this has happened in many occasions and it's been an extremely popular way of bringing people together. And in this instance, it would, it would serve, to your point, Mayor, precisely the kind of thing you can do on, on a regular movie night where you have, you know, multiple, what they would do is multiple, like in the old days, two films back to back, one appealing more to the older generation, classics and then, then modern ones, and you get a tremendous mix. And it really provides a cohesive and, and sort of experience on a regular basis, the kind of thing you want to do. But this idea, again, bubbled up from our, from our private sector. So the idea is that, is that Tim is going to try to repurpose this building and then work with the realtors to figure out what these possible repurposing of these buildings, how to expand their ability to market the buildings to a different breed of investor, people who would buy these buildings, not as hardcore retail specifically, but as other kinds of venues. Is that my understanding?
So I don't want to speak for Tim or Rista. It's not about selling the buildings to investors or developers. It's about reusing the brick and mortar spaces. You know, as I said, I mean, for hundreds of years, these spaces have been used for retail. It was a JCPenney before it was Zeitas Salon. It's helping us to identify, you know, how can we help these landlords, these property owners, look at their building and their space differently? There's a phrase that was coined a few years ago called "retail attainment", you know, your, your children's age, same as my kid's age. You know, they don't just go to a bar to sit at the bar and drink like our parents did. You know, they go to a bar to play games. They go to a bar to shoot a hatchet or throw a hatchet, you know, against a target. You know, there, there's a retail attainment component that so many of our landlords are unfamiliar with. And when I talk about these, you know, these buildings, the ones that are for sale, the ones that are on the market, you know, and it's a traditional marketing strategy. It's this many square feet, it's this much storefront space, and this many parking spaces. What we're trying to do is we're trying to develop a story on what the downtown Torrington potential is. Part of that story includes, it includes the things that Heather is talking about. It includes programming. The idea of the movie, our Parks and Recreation Department had been doing outdoor movie down at Co Park for the last couple of summers. This past summer, I, one of the, a former resident of Torrington worked with Steve Temkin and Steve Temkin purchased a higher-quality projector and movie screen. And they popped up outdoor movies up at the University of Connecticut, which is now the Five Points Center for Visual Arts. And many of the things with that Heather, that Heather is talking about, these are things that we've talked about over the years. You know, the outdoor market that, that was held down on Franklin Street a few years ago, I've been talking about that market for the past six years. You know, that spun out of an idea when I was in Chicago and I experienced for the first time the Kris Kendall market that pops up between mid-November and goes right till January 1st. So these are things that can be done low cost, no cost. We have Main Street Torrington, which is an organization that was, that was actually organized under Connecticut Main Street. It's a membership the city of Torrington provides. And it's under that, it's under that membership that we pay for that Torrington Main Street exists. Torrington Main Street took over the Main Street marketplace through our Arts and Culture Commission. We have Ed Canada and Rachel Kelly that have been doing the Strawberry Festival, the Watermelon Festival. They were planning a Oktoberfest. They've been doing some great things right up until the pandemic hit. These are things, I agree with you, Paul, that are, that they're, they're grassroots efforts. They do happen in the city of Torrington. But beyond the grassroots, we also have to look at, what is the sustainable, resilient reuse of these buildings? Because six weeks or eight weeks of a market really isn't going to change the economy of Torrington. It's not going to create jobs. It's not going to create a different tax base. But if we start to look at these buildings and work with these landlords and work with the businesses, we can help them to maybe move a little bit off of it's retail, no, it's entertainment, no, it's, you know, it's a pop-up. It's, you know, six months of this, and then it's six months of that. So...
I'm just trying to see the connection between what this work does. Look, you've got a landlord, he owns a building, it's in a prime location downtown, okay? He can't sell for retail, can't sell hardware, can't sell shoes, can't sell this, can't sell that. He wanted to sell something else, that's something else. So what is, what is the connection between getting the person who would provide, the entrepreneur who would then lease that building or that space from the landlord to do that thing? Somebody's got to risk money and a lot of it.
Well, absolutely.
And a new kind of business. Where is that connection to be made?
That is part of the connection. That is part of the work that Blue House is going to help us do, making those connections.
How does he know these people then? What, I'm looking for, I don't see much in the way of our portfolio from, from Tim Moore. I'm sorry, but I don't. As far as what your connections with people who have the money to create these kinds of alternative businesses that will then lease this space. Follow the money. Where, who's got the money?
So, you know, sometimes it isn't, sometimes it isn't going to be...
And I don't see where that connection to a big body of capital...
I know, Paul, I agree with you. But sometimes it isn't, sometimes it isn't going to be a big body of capital. Perfect example, our Christmas committee got together and we decided that we were going to fill those storefronts on Main Street with vintage mid-century modern, right? So when we did that, what are we thinking? We're thinking, this is an opportunity to maybe inspire somebody to think about those spaces differently. I had three separate phone calls from three separate individuals that said, "Oh, my gosh, I have been working in flea markets for the past 10 years. I see what's happening on Main Street. I'm interested in doing that. However, I can't take the risk of going into a multi-year lease if I can find a landlord that would work with me to let me pop this up for eight weeks, test the market. If it goes well, I can sign the lease. And if it doesn't go well, I haven't lost my shirt." So that's part of the story here. That's part of the back and forth. And when you talk about, you know, what are those connections? It isn't necessarily going to be that we find somebody out in San Diego that's going to move here and heavily invest in a storefront. It may be somebody who's already here in Torrington that has been pulling this together or holding it together on a much smaller scale that's ready to, this is where the economic gardening idea comes into, that's ready to maybe try to go to that next level. And this is a way for us to help them to get there.
All right. I, I will support this, Mayor. Again, I voted in favor of it.
I'd support it as well. But if two things I wanted to say. Number one, Five Points Gallery was a pop-up. Kelly's Crystals was a pop-up that went into three different locations until she found the corner that we, we wanted her to go into. That wasn't a big investment, but it was a steady, providing her the pop-up space for low rent and getting through that. So there are, and there are other landlords in here that have done the same thing. So pop-ups, Tim, good if you're listening, talk to Steve Temkin because he can help you with that. The other thing that I'm not sure if everybody is aware of, Heather and Charlotte and I and others, including Judy, Joanne Ryan, it's at one point, we created an organization we called Main Street Torrington. That organization changed a little bit over time. We had board members leave, we had some other things happening. That organization is fully viable right now. It has Ed Canada and Rachel Kelly. It has nonprofit status. That organization is there, ready to work with you, with the city. The city is paying dues to Main Street Torrington. But we started this six years ago because we had help from the city, but also from Connecticut Main Street. We, we met there all the time. We were invited to workshops and we did other things. So I think that's what Heather is remembering too. So I think that, Tim, if you talked to Heather, you talked to Steve Temkin and you talked to Rachel Kelly, what part of your stakeholders, I think you're going to find some good information and some forward movement.
Floor is still open. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, I would like to make one final comment, Mayor.
Yeah.
I was about to make it. Or let me complete the idea. Because I will support this, but I do think, I, I do think that this notion is, is, is not the fundamental way to solve the problem of downtown development, which again, to me, I, I look at it, and this is how I see the problem, is in order to fill those storefronts, in order to get traffic down there, the most obvious thing, clear thing that could be done, but we know it's got tremendous logistic problems, is just doing what's been kicked around for a long time, is making that just a walking outdoor mall, shut down those two blocks. That in itself would be huge. But because of the traffic and logistics, I recognize the problem. The, the other thing is though, what drives, would drive, you need people with disposable income, okay? That will support businesses and not just flea markets. Winstead Main Street's got a ton of flea markets, a lot of fleas. I don't see a lot of money. I don't see a lot of real progress there. What, what drives this is people with disposable income. What brings people disposable income to Torrington, property values as we know, safety as we know, attractive downtown, but primarily, 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 one of the key major things we all know is the quality of your educational system, which continues to be, as far as I know, we're still in the alliance this year. We're border, you know, we're still in that, with that huge albatross around our neck. And these discussions and all of this effort, it's fine, it's great. But the focus to me of city council doing the best we can for the people of Torrington to develop downtown and bring money and capital and investment to downtown is to stay on the backs of our educators to improve that, to making Torrington... is to stay on the backs of our educators, to improve that, to making Torrington one of the best school districts in the state of Connecticut and not one of the worst. And I understand that people in Torrington have voted to build a brand-new building, but brick and mortar does not promote, does not increase SAT scores. It just doesn't, okay? There's a whole lot of effort that needs to go into that, and I think our duty as city councilmen representing the best of the city is to keep, is to keep our focus on what are we doing as a city council? What can we do and what should we be doing to guarantee that we are moving quickly, very quickly, into creating the kind of curriculum with the kind of staffing that we need in Torrington so that when people want to move here, they say, let me first look at your school district, and they are impressed. And until we do that, you know, I don't think these ventures ultimately in themselves will sustain. I don't think it'll get you the sustainability you're looking for, Mayor. The school is the big nut to crack, and I still continue, after however many years I've been in this council, insist that we have a, we have an absolute role in that other than approving their budget every year. And with that, I stand down, thank you.
No, thank you, all right. To that end, I will tell you that I had a Board of Finance meeting last week, and Lorraine Pesky did ask for a joint meeting with our legislators as they're heading into the next legislative session. So I will be working on that, and you certainly can share those sentiments and that, and that platform. So, final call for questions for Rista in regard to her report. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Rista. And thank you, Tim, for tuning in, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Everyone has a nice holiday, bye-bye.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the city to convey the remaining half of the alley lying on the west side of the old Firehouse Building at 117 Water Street to the Midland Group LLC.
Move three.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. And second, I'm sorry, it was so soft, was that you? Councilwoman Wagner?
I'm so.
That's right.
My man.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second, the floor is open for questions. And this is one of those cool alley spaces that we talk about. Okay, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is another perfect example of reusing a building that has always been what it always was and is now going to be a brewery. So, these are the kinds of things that we hope will come out of our, our work in the next couple of years. It is beautiful, yeah. All right, item four, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting here in as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement to Wright Pierce in the sum of $4,406.12 and in the sum of $7,218.81.
Move four.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the ordinance subcommittee.
Well, we do have some information tonight. We're bringing forward the noise ordinance to the full council for their vote to put it towards a public hearing tonight. It was motioned and seconded at the meeting to go ahead. It all voted in favor to bring it and vote to go out to a public hearing in the future.
All right, has the entire council seen the body of the proposed ordinance?
I have.
No. Everybody's ready to schedule a public hearing on this one? Okay.
Well, Vic had a very good summary. I feel like maybe that was shared to the council before the public hearing, but I think we could still schedule it. It's, we vetted it pretty well through ordinance, if Frank, you agree, or?
Yeah, we're looking for one more item. I think we can find that in the next two, three, four weeks here. Get an actual substance, it was about bass levels, which I think I can check into it also and see if we can get something background on that, because it's not more about the, Vic brought up a good point, and it's not, and sort of the chief, Chief Baldwin brought it up, where it's not much as where the noise level heights, the decimals, but it's also a bass level, like if they're playing bass next door, and it's really, you can't really, you know, there's two different types of measurements. So we're looking into that one, that may be incorporated into this. But in the meantime, I think we're, we're close enough to bring it to a hearing and see that goes forward.
Okay, so Jonathan, when it comes to scheduling a hearing, is the proposed ordinance printed or a link provided to the language for the proposed ordinance? Okay, so if there's going to be further changes in this, should we look for a longer time for the scheduling of the hearing so that you can finalize the proposed language?
Yeah, I don't mind putting it forward in a month or so, if people, if the rest of the council members don't mind. I mean, it's not, you know, we've gone length into it over six weeks now, so, I mean, you know, I don't mind waiting.
Another month.
Another month at least, you know, and see what our dockets are.
Okay, so.
We do end the January, or if you'd like to do the first week of February, it'd be more than, you know.
Monday, the February 1st? Do you want to do the 1st?
February 1st, if the board members don't mind.
I do, so in the form of a motion, the proposal is to schedule a public hearing for the purposes of presenting an ordinance, a public, on public noise.
A noise ordinance.
A noise ordinance, and that hearing date would be February 1st. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. I heard a second from Councilman Cavanaro. And are there any questions?
Yes, how long will the, once the, once the document is presented and ready to be presented to the public, how long will it be posted before the meeting?
Will they have?
Month.
Month.
Month, right. You have the time, you have the time to put it out. No, to put it out.
The proposed ordinance, I just wanted to know how soon, how much time is out there before the public hearing?
If it's actually accessible to the public right now?
Okay.
There may not be, it's just a matter of just checking on one item, that's it.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, so February 1st. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, good. I think there'll be some neighbors that are happy to see that one move. All right, item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Superintendent and award the bid for timber harvest at Charlene Susan Best Park to Gutious Lumber Company, Inc. of Kanan, New York for the total amount of $56,982.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
A second.
And second by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? I see Brett is on the line with us, if there are questions. If not, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation, oh, wait a minute. Is this one tabled? No. I'll entertain a motion to, it is, this one is to be tabled. I'll entertain a motion to table items eight and nine on the agenda.
About seven. It takes seven.
Item seven, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize a mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated December 21st, 2020.
Move seven.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I, items eight and nine, the memos are not available yet, so I will entertain a motion to table.
Move to table.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Rabino, seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Councilman Rabino, seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to do that all day in my office, that dance that keeps the lights on, yeah. So, who do we have on the line for department heads? Brett, anything that you need to add? Do you want to give us an update on Christmas Village?
Obviously, this year we had to make a lot of adjustments to make Christmas Village happen with a reservation system. We've been working, you know, for at least the past two months prior to opening to make all the necessary adjustments. You know, fortunately, we've had a lot of loyal volunteers that have stepped forward to continue to help us out with our operations. The, the, the many loyal donors that come through each and every year continue to contribute to our operations, which helps us, you know, with not only current year operations, but future improvements to Christmas Village. This is our 73rd year. We felt, you know, we needed to put the best foot forward to make it, you know, continue to be annual tradition that, you know, brings a lot of people, you know, to the city of Torrington and a tradition that we're very proud of. You know, unfortunately, we weren't able to hold, hold the parade this year, which has grown, you know, tremendously over the years to over, you know, 1,000 participants. You know, it's, you know, we did what we could do to continue the tradition and, you know, we saw after opening day that we were able to increase, you know, our reservations per hour. So we put that out to the public. We had a waiting list of 700 people, which we pared down to try and get them in, you know, to allotted times, and then opened it back up to the public. Staff has been doing a tremendous job to, you know, really work to keep Christmas Village open this year. You know, it's just been a collective team effort as it is every year, but this much more this year with the circumstances we're under. You know, we hope to return to the normal next year and, you know, be able to expand our capacity. But I really think with, with the team effort that was put forward this year, you know, it was a tremendous success for what we had to work with. So we're rounding it out to the last few days. We'll be closing on noon on Christmas Eve, and again, just want to, you know, recognize all the people that contributed to make it a success this year under, you know, the pandemic that we're all experiencing. So, I wish everyone a happy holidays, and, you know, I hope everyone carries out the rest of this year in a safe manner and look forward to 2021.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, and I love that you're sitting under a star because you really had to bring out star quality this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Brett, can I ask, were donations, were they the same? Or, I know I have a check I haven't given you, but were we down or up, or?
Yeah, we're, we're still trying to, you know, go through that. We actually took a lot early on. You know, WZBG was great in promoting it. They weren't able to, you know, help us out on air this year as far as taking the donations, which we supplemented with our staff in the office, but they promoted us all day long, helped us out when we were open, when we were able to open up reservations after the fact. They continue to be a loyal supporter of ours. You know, donations at Christmas Village have been down this year, you know. Just obviously, people have their own struggles going on, whether they've, you know, lost their job or, you know, had been furloughed for a while, you know, obviously, we understood, stood that and, but, you know, I think those dedicated sponsors, you know, donors every year have stepped forward. We've received some enhanced donations from different groups, such as some of our local unions, which, you know, saw that we were struggling and, you know, were able to reach out to their members to ask for a little bit more money to contribute. You know, I definitely think we'll be down in, you know, comparison to years past. You know, another thing is we're not open as many days this year, which we felt, you know, in order to manage it, you know, there were some extra expenses and, you know, hire an extra off-duty officer to help us out. We had to hire some attendants to work a ticket booth, which we've never had before. So there, you know, we realized some extra expenses this year. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to weigh it all out, but I, you know, I really think, you know, understanding the circumstances with everyone's position over the last year and what they've had to deal with, we did expect to have, you know, it did decrease in donations this year. But, you know, we do appreciate everyone that contributes, whether it's $5, $100, you know. Every bit, you know, helps us out, and, you know, like I said, they help with the operations of Christmas Village, but also future investments for improvements to Christmas Village.
Thank you, Brett. Any other questions for Brett before we? All right, I see Chief Baldwin is on the line, or was on the line, is he still here? Is there anything you wanted to add this evening, Chief?
No, nothing to add, Mayor, just Merry Christmas to the council and their families, thank you.
Thank you. Carol Anderson?
No news from the clerk's office, but I do want to thank Brett and all the volunteers at Christmas Village. My grandchildren had a wonderful time there yesterday. Miss Claus was a big hit. So Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Thank you. I saw Penny was on the line also, she's supposed to be on vacation, but she's still there. Is there anything that you needed to add this evening, Penny? I'm going to take that deafening silence as no. Okay, item 11. Moving on, I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Move 11.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting with, let's start with the people on the call. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
All right, now that I am unmuted, no, I'm good, thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron?
Nothing from me, Mayor, Happy Holidays to everyone, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro?
Happy Holidays as well, and just wanted to know, Mayor, when can we expect an update on matters that were discussed in executive session last meeting?
I would hope we'll have something in the coming week, but at the very latest, at the next council meeting.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, Councilwoman Wagner, oh, Councilwoman Ruette, I'm sorry, we're still on the.
Now Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Let's say goodbye to 2020 and welcome 2021.
Well said.
For sure.
Councilwoman Wagner?
I want to commend the Highway Department for their phenomenal job this past week with the snowstorm. I know that we're still busy today removing snow, and they do a really amazing job. Also, thank you to the Police Department, Fire Department, all who'll be working through Christmas on our behalf. I think sometimes that's not appreciated as much by the general public, but I know we all here at City Council and the city of Torrington appreciate all they do for us. And finally, just to wish everybody a very happy, healthy, and Merry Christmas. I'm hoping that 2021 allows us to reunite with our friends and family again the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, stay safe, everybody. That's it.
All right, I'm going to just do a couple of very brief updates. The, just for the council's information, as you know from the. The, just for the council's information, as you know, from the beginning of the pandemic, we had established a separate COVID expenditure line item in our budget so that we could track any expenses that were directly related to a response to the pandemic. We then submitted to FEMA and to the CRF, that is the Connecticut Relief Fund, a reimbursement for the expenses. Our expenditures to date hover around 132, somewhere between 132 and $133,000. We did receive communication from OPM last week that we will in fact be receiving $528,508.48 to offset expenses. And we are working with comptroller and emergency management to identify those expenses. So that 528, 508 includes the 132 of reimbursables, but we also recognize that for the last nine months, our fire department has expended overtime in response to the pandemic. Our fire chief, who has, who is also our emergency management director, has dedicated, I would venture to say, a good 90% of his time for the last nine months on emergency management and response to the pandemic. So we'll be looking to offset his salary as a result of this. And we'll be going down a checklist as to what items we can charge to that account and use the grant funds to offset those expenses. I will bring a, a full report back to the council and there will be some action items that will be required of both the council and the Board of Finance, and you can expect those in January. Staying on the topic of the pandemic, just so that you know, we have been working with Torrington Area Health District and Charlotte Hungerford Hospital to identify a central location for the distribution or dispensation of mass vaccination. And we have identified that the, the armory, which is actually a state asset that we lease, but that is the key piece of property based on its proximity to the hospital, should there be any reaction to a vaccine that is, that is administered and that it's central to anybody who may need to walk to the location or needs public transportation. We did enter into an MOU, which was approved by the State Department of Administrative Services and the Department of Public Health, and I want to acknowledge Vic Michelle's good work on getting all of that pulled together so quickly. I think that they plan on taking, I shouldn't say possession of the property, but they will be hopefully in there January 4th.
January 4th, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so it's good news for our community that, you know, that we will be working with those two organizations to make sure that our residents have easy access to the vaccination. And then of course, you know, we're going right into budget, but I won't ruin everybody's holiday. I'll reserve that for the new year. With that said, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Rubino, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
We're adjourned. Thank you.